I figured ask Pastor Jeff Chitwood with Anchor Christian Church to lead us in prayer this evening, please. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Dear God, we come to you today and we thank you for another day of life and the blessings that you give us each day. We thank you for this community that you've blessed us with, a place to live and to share life together. And Lord, as we enter into this season, summer and hurricane season, we ask for your protection and watch over us. I thank you for those that serve and lead in so many ways. I pray that you will just use them to make us all better people and a better community. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilwoman Carr, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Here.
Councilman Dewitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Forbes?
Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We are going to start with public comment on agenda items. Any member of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing none, I guess we can move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your preference?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye. Just want to make a quick comment.
Yes.
One or two of these items deals with reaching out for grants and don't want to go not said. I think staff is just doing a great job in being proactive and reaching out. So, once again, thanks to, thanks to staff for doing that.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Okay, we are going to move on to proclamations and presentations. And we have a birthday girl, or almost birthday girl, in the house. A hundred-year birthday celebration to Barbara Lorraine Owen Hinkson. If her and her party and family and friends could please come forward, that would be great. (applause)
(inaudible)
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 Yay!
(laughing)
Sure.
Why don't you get over next to it?
Oh, okay.
(inaudible)
How many people can say this? They've celebrated the last day of their 99th year and are going to turn 100 tomorrow. That's amazing.
(inaudible)
And you even saw the Red Sox win the World Series, right?
Absolutely.
Before they broke the curse.
Well, we're so delighted to have all of you here tonight. And on behalf of the city of Benita Springs, this is a certificate of recognition proudly presented to Barbara Lorraine Owen Hinkson. Congratulations on this amazing milestone. May each day bring forth a precious memory of the past and the chance to create another amazing memory tomorrow. Wishing you all of the best and warmest regards as you celebrate your 100th birthday. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, May 1st, 2019. But your birthday is May 2nd. May 2nd, and you are going to, at some point, I understand, get in a hot, hot balloon and a hot air balloon and go for a little bit of a ride, huh?
Woo!
And not for the first time. Well, I'd like to give this to you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Barbara?
And would you like to speak? Would you like to?
We have a question. You don't get to speak from my mom.
(inaudible)
A lot of the Imperial River.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Barbara. Happy birthday to you.
We were going to share that.
God bless.
He's really special.
Now, you should tell him where he's standing though, because I didn't know. Isn't it right there on the shore?
Exactly.
Along the Imperial River.
Potato, potato.
And do we believe Elizabeth Taylor was there, right?
Buddy?
Buddy Hackett.
Ah, yes, yes.
Yeah, he was drinking.
And then they went to the Imperial River and got healed.
Would any of you like to say something?
We don't need too long.
Momma's had the talk.
As we say, 100 years old in a wheelchair, but all marvels.
Friday and next week.
Oh, we want pictures.
We want pictures.
Thank you all.
Happy birthday.
Thank you all.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
I don't think you.
Yeah.
I hope you have one.
I will.
Oh, certainly.
Thank you.
Hold up here a little.
And video.
Remember the Royal Motors?
Now kids don't know how to use it.
Bye-bye. Thank you, everybody, and happy, happy birthday.
Oh, my gosh.
44 years ago.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight years.
Oh, yikes. I had a rough halfway point.
We did. I saw them at the doctor's yesterday.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I had another doctor's appointment this morning. Aces there, too, so.
Oh, yay.
It was rough, what, two meetings ago? We had.
There is.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you so much, and once again, happy birthday, my dear. We're now going to move on to a presentation from Neighborhood Services on rental permitting, professional licensing, and best management practices for landscaping and emergency management preparation. And this is green sheet 1905-128.
Good evening.
Hello, team.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second in the two-part series that we're bringing you on Neighborhood Services. This evening, we'll focus on permitting and rentals and also some more statistics involved with that, as well as a first glimpse of the preparedness, disaster recovery preparedness. We'll have more information on that on our June, our first meeting in June, which is the beginning of hurricane season.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Tony Backers, Neighborhood Services Manager. This is kind of part two from what we had gone through about, about four weeks ago. The first part, which dealt with code enforcement. Tonight, as Arlene explained, we're going to run through some of these. I'll try to make it as interesting as I can on this. We dealt with the code enforcement, so we'll cover off on these. The Rental Permit Program outline. This was brought in initially as an annual program. It'd be an annual rental program to establish some sort of structure for the rentals and to prevent absentee landlord issues. The standards we follow are by the adopted International Property Maintenance Code under our ordinance, and they're minimum standards for maintenance of structures and for the equipment, including dwelling units. There is a statutory requirement upon landlords that they maintain structures to provide their tenants with healthy, safe, and sanitary living conditions, and we are there to enforce the minimum standards. There is a rental inspection for every rental unit prior to issuance of a permit. Now, there is exemptions, and there's probably many questions regarding rental issues, but there are exemptions, and they're mainly attributed to state statute issues where we are preempted, and the exemption's under, I believe it's 718, 719, and 720 of state statute, which is relevant to homeowners associations, religious organizations with the housing of clergy, state sanctioned housing, and also under, I believe it's Florida State Statute 125, which is the tourist tax. If there's tourist tax for lodging establishments, that also preempts us from being able to utilize our rental program on it. With that said, all the rental units that we deal with, both short and long term, we don't denote whether it's a long term or a short term within the city, do have to get a rental permit. The issuance is subject to an interior and exterior inspection, and it's a fairly comprehensive inspection that does go on by our inspectors. And as I explained before, we've got the four inspectors, and it's quadranted up in the city, and they will go out and do their inspections. And the permit is valid for a period of three years. Initially, it had been brought up as an annual permit, mainly due to, I mean, the administrative issues with maintaining the amount that we deal with and the inspections. From my understanding, it was just too much, and they made it a three-year permit process. And I've got some statistics further on in there that may, may be of interest to you with that. All owners that don't live locally, and that means within the 20th judicial region, have to appoint a local agents. This prevents the absentee landlord issue, so they have to live within the 20th judicial, which is Lee Collier, Charlotte Hendry Glades. So, the standards that we're, we hold them to, and it's a sheet that goes, and you'll see that there's a fairly large amount of things that the landlords have to come up to snuff with in order for their properties to be approved by the city. Probably the number one is the smoke fire alarms detectors. We enforce and make sure and mandate that every rental unit that we inspect is up to the standards. I think it was 2015, according to Florida Building Code, they have to be either hardwired or have a 10-year sealed battery. So, if the smoke alarms are not, either of that, it will not be passed. Windows, proper ventilation and lighting, and they have to have screens if they open. They also have got to be weather tight with doors as well, and they've got to provide proper ingress and egress. Doors that don't open, again, it's going to be a failure on the rental permit. Kitchens, kind of self-explanatory there. They've got to have the necessary utilities. You've got to have a stove and a clean preparation area. And holes in walls, cracks, breaks, anything along those lines. Interior or exterior is going to be another issue that will not pass. Bathrooms have to have the vents working. Just having them in the ceiling without working is not going to pass. And occupancy, it's got to have sufficient square footage. There is a ratio, and it's in bedrooms, I believe it's 75 square feet, the first person, and 50 square feet, the second person thereafter. Roughly, it comes out to each bedroom will be two people. So, putting four people into a one-bedroom house, again, is not going to be acceptable. This is so we're establishing a standard within the city for rentals. Plumbing and electric, our inspectors do check leaks, and they'll check the electrical units within the house. And the entire unit must be free from infestation of rodents or other pests. So, bedbugs, rats, cockroaches, any sign of infestation, and again, it's going to fail the inspection. And free of trash, junk, debris, and other items that can also cause the rodent harbage. And this, again, is not just for the tenant moving in. It does protect the landlord themselves and their property, the neighborhood and community in the city in general, if we're holding up these standards.
Tony, I'm sorry. I was just distracted. So, my apologies. What are the standards for a single-family home in terms of how many people who are not family members? How does that work?
It's done on people as opposed to family members.
Family, okay.
So, and it's not even, it wouldn't be children. It's per person in the house.
Right.
And there's an equation. So, if it's a two-bedroom house, four people would be acceptable in there.
Okay.
And subsequent to that, if we hear of a house that is, has, is a rental unit, and there is an overcrowding issue, again, that's something that we can, and we'll get into that further along, we do have means by which to address that.
Thank you.
Just like when you go to the buffet, they don't care if you're related, how many people are eaten?
Something like that.
Could you just clarify, this applies to all rentals, even for like weekly renter rentals? Or how about Airbnb and all that kind of stuff?
If it's a lodging establishment paying a tax, the tourist tax, we are preempted. We do not have the ability to take any.
So, those that I mentioned would be subject to the tourist tax, and then we wouldn't be able to inspect it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but with any unit, even something under an HOA, if there's an issue within a rental unit, even if we don't issue the permit, and it could be to deal with mold or, you know, an issue that would come under that living standard, then we would still have the ability to go, and it'd be a code enforcement case, it just wouldn't be under this program, under the rental program.
Okay. So, they would still have to apply by that even if they had, didn't have a permit? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. You still have to ensure, you know, minimum standards. If somebody's living in.
Standards that we establish here would apply whether or not they are required to have a permit? Is that?
To a degree, yes. Let's see, if it's a code enforcement case, something that's going to come under the IPMC, which is under our ordinance anyway, then it would be that case, but it wouldn't be under the rental. The rental program gives us the ability to inspect and issue a permit. If there is something that is still going to be a code enforcement case, rodent, you know, if you've got, you know, an infestation, then we're still going to have the ability to. Doesn't mean we cannot go in and still do a code case.
They do have the ability, if it's not meeting the standards of the International Property Maintenance Code, whether there is a permit for a rental or not, they still have to meet minimum housing standards per our code. It's just a different mecca of enforcement they would use in the, in the process if they're not complying.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is the rental program, the implementation of rental program, separate apart from the actual regulations and what the standards are. The standards are already there. We're not talking about adopting new land development regulations, new building. All, all the tools are there. This is whether or not we're going, you know, we're looking at how to enforce it.
And are you allowed to kill the rodents if they're there?
We don't get involved in the actual extermination, but.
Are you allowed to? Because in DC, you have to take the whole family and move them someplace.
We would, we would deem the property as uninhabitable at that point if there's an infestation. And in this instance, with regards to the rental issue, no one's going to be able to rent a property out if we go in and we see complete infestation with bedbugs or cockroaches. And, and I've actually gone out with inspectors on a couple of those cases as well.
You just get rid of it, and then it's okay?
Yeah, we need to see something from, from an exterminator company, and we go in and confirm, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, the heat map, the heat map on the rental inspections here, again, you can't actually see the little pinpoints on all of them because they're not colored particularly well, but it does cover the whole city. The blue area and the yellow area in the center there shows the concentration of cases. So, they are spread out throughout the city of Benita, but there is that concentration. And if you compare that actually to the code cases, you're going to see that there is some correlation between the geographical area where there is a high percentage of rental units and as there are code cases.
What is the, I know the red would be more dense, but is there a percentage of density that that's showing in the area or anything like that?
It, I'm not.
More dense.
Yeah, yes. The hotter it is, is the, yeah, more concentrated. So, the permittee, this one here is, it can be fairly contentious because we can deal with these on code cases. Where there are repeated code violations that do affect the residents, it can constitute a public nuisance, and a rental permit can be revoked upon an adjudication of guilt or a plea of no contest to any violation of the following provisions. And that can be either in a court case in Fort Myers or through our hearing examiner as well, through our process. And it's for these. We've got noise ordinance, animal control ordinances, solid waste, property maintenance code, minimum housing ordinances, parking, or provisions of the Land Development Code concerning habitation by more than one family. So, when you're getting into the more than one family, in a house that is designed for one family, if you're dealing with a standard three-bedroom home and you're getting two families in there, then it's going to be in breach of this. So, just some statistics from 2018. During 2018, we had approximately 1,100 rental units in the city with valid permits. Our inspectors, our four guys, have gone out and conducted 744 inspections, and during, approximately, we had 100 rental verification cases. And what this is, is where we'll receive a call, or we have reason to believe that there is a property being used as a rental, and we'll go out to attempt to determine if it is. We found that 80% of these cases we went to were in fact operating without a permit. Not all of this is done for, you know, for surreptitious reasons. Some people just don't know they've got a house and they rented out here, and it's, you know, we can put out on our website, but not everybody's going to do their due diligence. So, we provide people the ability to come into, into compliance. And of the inspections, in initial inspection, 45% of them failed throughout 2018. Then secondarily, 80% passing at the reinspection. So, there's a high success on the second inspection, but the first one, it is pretty, pretty low. It's 40, you know, 55% are passing, 45% are failing. That's purely due to speculation. As to why that is, possibly it's a three-year renewal instead of a, you know, a shorter renewal. It could be a number of different, different reasons. And of the 20%, if you're wondering what happens to those 20% on reinspection that are not passing, they will continue to fail until they pass. We do not lower the standards. The standards remain as they were at the start. And moving along now, just for the professional licensing, all of the landscapers, whether they're professional or institutional, who work within the city do register with. They have to get licensed with us annually, and that's done at the end of September, start of October, fiscal year. They've got to obtain through the Department of Environment statewide, Florida Green Industry's best management practices for the protection of water resources in Florida. This goes along with our, you know, strategic priorities with environment. We have around 200 professional institutional landscapers that do register with us, which is quite, quite a lot. That's not to say there aren't some that are out there still operating. This is what we should see on the side of the truck. This is the decal that we issue every single year, and if they don't display two of those decals, that is going to be in violation of our ordinance. So, we try to maintain that everybody has got that same level of training in order to operate. And also, if we're out, the inspectors are out, and they see somebody applying fertilizer, they're going to see that these people are certified. So, this is our brochure that hands out. Neighborhood Services provides every year to the point of sale, to the retailers, this brochure, and it has to be put at the point of sale. We print them out, we provide them to them, and then we maintain and monitor that this is being done. All of this shows, and again, and it does deal with, with the environmental issues. It's going to deal with vegetative grass clippings, everything with this, and the runoff, the algae, you know. There's so much we can do. Some people are exempt from this. Golf courses, agricultural uses are exempt, but they are monitored at state level by different departments. So, the professional and institutional, we are watching over as much as we can and making sure the point of sale is achieved. And the final component to this is emergency management, and this is an overview. We are planning on having a workshop in June with, with partner agencies where we're going to more specifics. This is just a, an overview component. And that logo there is the FEMA, is their wheel of continuum. It's ongoing. Emergency management and preparedness is not something that just starts in hurricane season and ends at the end of hurricane season. This is a year-round. And it works on the premise of mitigation, so constant public education. We're doing hazard mitigation, vulnerability assessments, infrastructure, and all the departments are working with partner agencies on this. To have an emergency action plan to meet the requirements of the city and following an event and an emergency, like just gone through Hurricane Irma, these, as tragic and trying as they are, they do provide invaluable information to move on. And they say prior, prior, was it prior planning and preparation prevents poor performance. So, kind of work along those. And the response and recovery, this, again, we will cover in June at the workshop, more along those lines. Just to show the practical application, stormwater is the city of Benita Springs' number-one strategic priority. It's very, very important. This goes into not just mitigation, but the preparedness. All the departments in the city are involved in some way, shape, or form with this. And since October 1st of last year, our department has started to track code cases that do have a stormwater component. That can be vegetation in drainage ditches, swales, as well as trees that are down in rivers. So, since that, actually, this is a five-month, this is from October through to the end of March, we opened 33 cases. Our inspectors did 207 inspections within that five-month period, and out of that, 28 cases were resolved and five were sent to hearing. So, it's just to give you an idea of there is the component. Now, we're pulling out those statistics to see where, how it's working. And Neighborhood Services, we do the oversight of the resource preparation, you know, the radio satellite, we make sure, monitor, make sure that they're working, as well as working in conjunction. I've worked in conjunction very closely with a staff attorney on training and ensuring that we are getting the appropriate training level. And FEMA courses now, they are maintaining and encouraging more and more certification through FEMA. This helps with federal grant funding, and it also helps, obviously, with response should a natural disaster or an emergency hit. Just found out as of today, the city staff, full-time city staff, we currently have in excess of 120 FEMA certifications throughout our staff that we've obtained recently. So.
Yeah, I'll just add that as part of our personnel performance, every full-time city employee will at least receive the first two levels of FEMA training.
We've separated it into three tiers, and, and again, the courses are available as well to, to Councilor Mayor, there are courses as well for FEMA. We've been working to update and adapt the emergency action plan, and that's currently in its final stages with, with lessons that have been learned, and we're moving along with that fairly, fairly rapidly. And with the, you know, the ongoing component, throughout the year, Neighborhood Services do work with Lee County EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. We attend training, we attend courses, and we maintain dialogue with, with them and also with other partner agencies involved with cities' emergency management efforts. We all work very closely in hand-in-hand with this to identify issues that we can work on. And that concludes.
You're good? As I was going to say, counsel, Amy?
We're going to have another update in June, writers, something.
Our June 5th meeting, we're going to have an update. And then also, Carly is working on, we're hoping to have at your second meeting in May, just not for discussion purposes, but the draft of the update that we're working on for the city's emergency management plan as well. But that would have it to you by the next meeting for discussion at the June, June 5th meeting.
I just have a question where you had, on the two consecutive slides, the two heat maps of the rental, and the next one was the code enforcement. And now, numbers aren't there, so as we said before, they may be hotter than other areas, but they may not be a lot. But on the face of it, it kind of asks for a question, which is, do we have an issue with substandard rental housing that's setting out all those code enfor-
We're going to have another update in June, writers, something.
June 5th meeting, we're going to have an update. And then also Carly is working on, we're hoping to have at your second meeting in May, just not for discussion purposes, but the draft of the update that we're working on for the city's emergency management plan as well. But that would have it to you by the next meeting for discussion at the June, June 5th meeting.
I just have a question where you had, on the two consecutive slides, the two heat maps of the rental, and the next one was the code enforcement. And now, numbers aren't there, so as we said before, they may be hotter than other areas, but they may not be a lot. But on the face of it, it kind of asks for a question, which is, do we have an issue with substandard rental housing that's setting out all those code enforcement cases, or
I would say the, the map kind of identifies that there are some issues in similar areas. Now, not all of the code cases are related to rental issues, but they would, property maintenance issues would be probably a fair guess.
All right. All right, thanks.
Brett?
Yeah, I was going to give you a couple places to check for the invasive plants that are plugging up flowways. Go to Bonita Beach Road in front of Hunter's Ridge, Burnwood and that. Go on the north side, which there's all kind of outfalls that drain and swales over to the river eventually, and they're loaded with Brazilian peppers. At least they were two or three months ago.
We will, we will look into that.
Yeah. I think one's near the mattress factory. They, they're kind of opposite Burnwood for the most. Then there's also a, a flowway that comes out, that drains the big ditch on the south side that goes 45-degree under Bonita Grande and comes out on the northwest corner, and there'll be a, a swell there, and that's probably, probably could be looked at too.
Council?
I will make a comment. I'm most, one of the things that I'm most concerned about is communications. And I know, having been in Irma, I stayed, that it was the communities apart from the city or any other official people that really helped people that were isolated. And at one time, we were trying to have contact people identified through the city in each neighborhood that would sort of be on the forefront of where we could contact them. I don't know how we would contact if we don't have any communication, but I wondered, I would like to have some report on that and how that dovetails with the communication upgrades that you have instituted, because again, we had some issues with communications in the city. So I, and I think that when I went to a couple of the meetings afterwards from FEMA and at Lee County, they all said that that connection to neighborhoods apart from official people, it's people who live in your neighborhood, that somehow you have to know that there is someone that knows who else is in the neighborhood. So I don't know if we've done anything that way, or whether we could put the word out to get the information to us or something like that.
There, there have been, well, there's modifications within the, the emergency management plan that hopefully will answer some of the questions. We have also got a list of, of neighborhood communities with, with people, and I believe that's what you're alluding to. We have been working on that, Neighborhood Services too.
Okay, thank you.
Brett?
On, on what Amy's bringing up, there is a, a resource, and I would encourage you to talk to two people, Greg DeWitt, who is not here tonight, and also Chief Dagel, because they have, they have a group called the Certs, and there are several hundred, maybe more, in Bonita, and they're all from different neighborhoods, different homeowner. And part of their job is to know who are people that would, in an emergency, need help, couldn't take care of themselves, that they're also trained in a certain amount of first aid and a whole lot of things. So we, we need to form a, a joint relationship which would be helpful. They were not activated in the last Irma, by the way. But I, I would hope that next time we could get them to, to do that, because if we could ahead of time, you could really get, because you've got a lot of, lot of what you call boots on the ground that live in the neighborhood, so they, they would know better what, who needs what.
As part of the new emergency operations plan, I've been working with our communications director, Laura Taylor, to really enhance the communications section, and I'll have a lot more detail about how to get your information and how it will be disseminated in like an Irma instance. We're working thoroughly on that part.
Thank you.
Council, anything else?
No, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Very much.
Mayor and council member items. We have a first reading here, looks like.
First reading in an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, repealing and replacing ordinance 17-13, setting forth the parks and recreation fee schedule, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion included, and effective date.
Move to approve.
It's been a motion to approve in a second. Council, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumbel?
Aye.
Okay, great. Public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak at this time, please come forward.
I know. Well, come on. You're going.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath, and I just want to comment on two events that occurred after our last meeting. And of course, the first one was the Royal Scoops 25th Annual Easter Event. And I don't know whether you all have heard, but unfortunately, the church has sold the property surrounding it there, and they're not sure what's going to happen. You know, they started out in the parking lot where their store is, and then they moved across, and they take up a lot of space, parking, and their sectioning of the kids gathering their eggs and the relay races, and then, you know, those two are so generous. I think the amount I saw was they spent $7,000 putting that on. And it's so great to see them. It was just wonderful, wonderful. But like they said, they'd been, they could maybe use Riverside Park. The thing is, there's stores right across the street, and it's so easy for them to get whatever they need. So let's wish them the best. You know, maybe it's meant to be 25 years, you've given your all, so move on. And the next one was, of course, last Saturday, Earth Arbor Day, and as you mentioned, mayor, it was conflicting with the services for our former councilperson, Pat McCourt. So of course, a lot of us there couldn't attend. But Arlene and husband Bobby showed up for a little while to pay their time there. And of course, we had it at the Y, which worked out really well. The soccer teams were there, the parents were there, the people were going in, in and out using the equipment, and Joey, I can't remember his last name, they set up tables for us. And once again, our friend Steve Trumball had eight, 10 flats of milkweed seedlings, which I gave away. And I'll tell you what really impressed me was, I can't tell you how many kids would come by, and I'd say, they'd see free milkweed, they'd say, oh, we learned about that in school, that, we need that for the monarch butterflies, so good for that. And then, of course, Jane was there with the tree committee, they planted a tree, you'd read the proclamation. But it worked out very well being at the Y. It really, really did, it was great. And I think that's just about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Absolutely. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you very much, Jason, Long City of Sanibel, for the record. I just wanted to, I, when I was down at the Astero City Council meeting this morning, I'd say the same thing about how exceptionally proud I was of Bonita Springs Council and your speaking at the Lime Rock Mining Hearing. It was a fantastic show of force, and I was pleased as punch to see that all, and the cities were there together, what I consider to be four sister cities who are hanging together and making a real difference by, by participating that way. I was, we, we turned one, and we nearly got a second, so as far as I was concerned, I think the silver lining from that was is that people really got to see that you have to participate to get anything done. There was a lot of people that I noted that were first time, and water issued people that showed up, and I think it was a big eye-opener to see that even though everybody there was against it, it still went through, and it plays a great deal into things that we have to deal with ourselves now with the, the county commission. Another thing in, I was at the Astero Republican Club meeting, and there was an excellent presentation by Ms. Saxton regarding 10 acres of land that they're trying, the Marx Land on the Astero River that they're trying to raise funds for. In furtherance of that purchase, my law firm donated $10,000 of legal services and fees in order to draft all the correct documents and make sure we get the process taken care of, they would have to. I said, the only thing, though, is that there has to be public access. I'm not looking through wire fences with the rest of the citizenry as government trucks, all respect to government, go careening around the place, and the public doesn't get to enjoy what is their inheritance as citizens. So again, I want to thank you very much for speaking on the day. You did a crackerjack job, mayor. Thank you.
With weak legs two weeks ago.
You were very brave.
Like a newborn fawn, Kevin Ruane said. Had wobbly little legs, but I was there. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to the city attorney's report.
I've got two items for you today. The first one is on one of the BG Mine cases. This is, in particular, this is a quo warranto case. I don't know how much detail you've gone into this in the past, but this is the case where basically BG Mine is asking to be deannexed from the city. We have a mandatory mediation coming up at the end of the month, and what I'm asking today is for the board, if, if you're so interested to select one of the members to attend the mediation, to help participate, and then to relay possibly the results of those mediation to the rest of the council, if we go forward with any settlement discussions, or at least to be participant in the, in the program. So I'll leave that up to you to decide whether anyone wants to be involved in, in the selection.
I propose, Peter, if you're available.
Should be healthy.
All right. We'll get you, we'll get you the dates and all that information.
Okay, great, thank you.
The, the other item came to me from Lee County Attorney's Office. You may recall, a couple of years ago, it was 2017, the issue regarding networked, effectively networked taxicabs, is the Ubers, the Lifts of the world, there was a, there was a state preemption on that, saying local governments can't regulate. Around the same time, I believe Collier County just made, came up with the decision, where they were fighting whether to regulate it or not, they decided, we're just going to get rid of all regulations. At the time, they had a taxicab ordinance. So Lee County, the board is now considering the possibility of removing their taxicab ordinance, which applies countywide, since they can only regulate half the industry, and probably the half that is sort of dying on its own. They wanted to, me to reach out to you and see if there was any objections from the city, because this does also affect the city of Bonita Springs, countywide ordinance.
Are you saying they can't regulate Uber or Lyft?
Cannot.
Oh, I see. That issue there. What do you call least common denominator?
What about the driverless cars? Same thing? I mean, I don't even know if those.
You know, I think that, I haven't looked at that a while, but I believe that is preempted. There is a state statute on that. Also, it's testing. So if there's no objections, I'll, I'll go ahead and pass that word along to the county attorney's office. The city has no, no issues with what the county's perceiving.
So there's no restriction for Uber drivers?
There is not. And so I think.
The, North Carolina, I believe it was, the young woman.
Right.
You know, was sort of spacing out on her phone, and, you looking for a ride? Oh, yeah, 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 you're my ride, and got in, and was murdered. And, you know, not pleasantly, you know, raped and murdered. So they're arguing in North Carolina that at minimum, Uber drivers should have a photo ID, know the name of the person, there should be some exchange that then identifies, yes, I did call you to pick me up.
I, I don't disagree, and, and the state has the full authority to regulate it, they just decided that they're going to regulate it at their level and not allow the local governments to create.
Do they? Yeah.
They do, they do, they do have some regulations on it, yes.
Like what?
I don't, I don't recall.
Insurance levels, background checks, things like that.
Oh, all right, so.
The real thing is identifying that.
And, and, and there is, if, I, I use Uber a lot, and, and I also drive for Uber. So as a passenger, you see a picture of the driver, you know their car, the make and model of the car, you know their driver's license, the license plate. And then as a driver, we know your first name. So when you come, you ask, you know, you can check to the license plate and make sure that's fine, you can say my name, and then I can repeat your name back, or I can say your name to you, and that's how you know you have the right driver.
And that should be required, because, I'm sorry, the millennials are just so into their phones, that they might just, just get in the car, so maybe.
And that, that is a problem. A lot of times you pick up at bars and people are just drunk, and they just hop in whatever car shows up, so.
I was just going to say.
It, it's not really an Uber thing, it's just anybody that, you know, happened to pull up, they're going to hop in the car to get a ride home, so.
Oh, Derek, so there is, so this.
There is, it looks like.
Statewide, all right. So now, let's go back to what the county is doing. I would hope that at a minimum, they'd have the regulations that apply statewide for Uber for taxis. You're saying they're dropping them totally?
Generally, the state has let, the counties have adopted, going back to the 1980s and even before, the counties have adopted regulations on taxicabs.
Right. But we've just heard from what Mike said, that there is, there is a preemption, but the state does have regulation on Uber.
Correct. And I'm sure they, I'm sure they actually have regulations on taxicabs.
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
I know. There's also state law saying that local governments can have regulations on, on taxicabs.
Well, I'm getting is, obviously, it should be, I think obviously, it should be the same for taxis as it is for Uber statewide at a minimum.
Yeah, and I, I even look into what the rationale at the board level is at Lee County Commission, it may be in fact that they wish to, to remove the restrictions so that they're playing on an even playing field. What was relayed to me from the county attorney's office is before they adopt anything repealing it, they wanted to see what the thoughts are of the local jurisdictions.
Well, could I say that our thought would be it shouldn't be less than Uber regulation? Is that fair?
Right. Which is no regulation.
No, it is, statewide, at the state, at the state level, yeah.
Yeah, but he's talking about Lee County, so.
Understood.
Right, but I, I, I think it's easy enough to.
Right.
Or back to them, we have no objection provided, when this is removed, we're talking, there, there's a level playing field.
Right.
And not to take it back to its lowest common denominator, because, you know, somebody being impaired is, you know, objective, subjective, any, and it's a lot of different things. But if somebody shows up, an Uber, like impaired, Derek, is there a point where, and you hate to sound inhumane, but the liability shifts? Is, I mean, look, 95, 98% of the time, nobody's going to have a problem with an Uber because they're sober. But college bars, college campuses, towns, any town where somebody shows up and there's an impaired judgment, and it's, you know, taxicabs, they would look forever, they were upside-down bathtubs that were yellow that said the word taxi on them, where there's no identification marks. Where?
There is nothing.
Where does that, where do those two worlds or three worlds mix?
I'm looking at the regulations the state's adopted, and they do, there's insurance requirements, there's requirements regarding disclosure affairs and several, and background checks, but there is nothing in that regulation that says, this is, this is where you're supposed to treat the condition of your drivers. I suspect that any, any such incidences would be treated under general tort law.
Well, I was, I, I'm in favor of what you're, what we have decided here, but could we pass some information back to the state to see if they at least have some minimal standards for taxicabs also?
I'll provide you, I'll provide you, what I'll do is I'll send out a follow-up email with the, the laws that the state's adopted on, on the, what's called network transportation companies and the tax, the taxicabs, as well as a copy of the current Lee County ordinance.
That sound logical, Mike, from what, you know, from your, because you have a different vantage point of it.
Yeah, it, it should be an even, even playing field, which was the problem, because I was a driver when Lee County was being restrictive and Collier County decided to open it up to, you know, fair play on everybody. And so at that time, instead of paying in Lee County, I just always did Collier County. But then when the state preempted it, it, you know, just opened everything up, made it a lot easier, you know, you can drive across the county lines and not have any problems.
And it was, it was several years ago, the Collier decision, I was actually at the meeting when it occurred for another, on another matter, and I recall the conversation was not about the different standards so much as it was a little bit more about protectionism. You know, the, the interests that the taxicab drivers currently had, which would be upset by, by allowing these unregulated fields coming in. Now, of course, the state has adopted regulations at this point, so. Okay, I think I've got enough direction. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Derek?
Nothing, I have nothing else.
Okay. City managers' items.
Yes, I'm going to ask Jackie Gensen to come forward and start with an update on, back in February, the city council had asked staff to begin a draft ordinance on DOT regulations, some inconsistencies we felt we needed to bring attention to. So Jackie's going to give an update on that process.
Good evening. Good evening, city council. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen, I'm filling in for John today, he has a sick child, so forgive me, I will do my best. Regarding the DOT code regulations, it's been quite some time since those regulations have been updated. There were some very minor amendments done in 2014, and obviously, since that time, there's been changes in regulations, and it's probably a good time to go ahead and take a good look at our DOT code and go ahead and see if there's any other internal inconsistencies with state regulations, our own plans, and things of that nature. So what you'll see before you in this green sheet is a list of items that we intend to look at. We do have a draft that is available, that staff has been working on with the city attorney's office, and once we make those changes, we plan to go ahead and circulate that to. And once we make those changes, we plan to go ahead and circulate that to outside entities in the industry and also to outside special legal counsel. So based on that, this is the summary of the items that we're looking at changing. If there's any questions or any other items you wish for us to look at, we'd be happy to add that to this list.
Counsel?
Well, I'm assuming it's in here somewhere, but I know some residents were concerned that neighboring neighbors had what was turning into an airview marinas because of the various angles where, you know, you not just have a boat dock or one or two boats, but with everything. So I assume that's somewhere in the middle of this, trying to find a middle happy medium?
With that, that's more so in our definitions of what is a marginal dock, the differences between how we treat dock facilities on artificial bodies of water and then on natural bodies of water. So yes, we are looking at that issue.
Artificial meaning the canals?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Counsel, anything else? Jackie, do you have anything, or?
I'm not on this agenda item. I do not.
Matt? Anybody? Okay.
So Jackie can stay there because our next agenda item is an update on the golf course regulations by community development.
Now that we have you.
So again, pitching in for Mr. Dolmer in his absence. So as you might remember, back in, towards the end of 2017, the city of Bonita Springs did pass an ordinance for moratoriums on golf course conversions. That was for a period of a year. In the summer of 2018, Michael Fegan at the time was leading the charge with these regulations. He did a lot of research, brought to your attention some good examples that we found within the state of Florida and asked for some direction based on those examples of feeling the temperature of where city council wanted to go. We did receive some general direction on the scope of changes to go ahead and pursue. But at the same time, you also stressed to us that was very important that we received public input and to host a series of public workshops and that you really wanted those to occur during season. So in doing that, based on the time that the moratorium was going to expire, we had to go ahead and extend the moratorium to go ahead and host those workshops during season. We had a phenomenal turnout at the first workshop in January to the point where we actually had to delay the meeting and host it at a larger venue. So we hosted two workshops at the Bonita Springs High School in February. It was very well attended, I would say. Between 150 to 200 participants went ahead and participated in those workshops. We got excellent feedback, which is attached into your green sheet today. We, for those of you that could not participate, we had table breakouts and a series of topics where we went ahead and solicited input from the participants. So in the backup, you'll see all those comments catalogued by topic. And the intent was to go ahead and look at those comments and go ahead and incorporate those into our draft regulations based on the direction that we've received last year in the summer. So where we're at right now, we are formulating those regulations. We will be working with the city attorney's office and also outside special land use council on the draft regulations. Based on the expiration of the moratorium, we're hoping to go ahead and schedule just an introductory meeting, if you will, with the local planning agency so they can take a look at the regulations, but then bring it back for permission to advertise either the second meeting in May or maybe June. So that's kind of the timeline and Derek and Arlene can supplement.
Yeah, well, I spoke with Jackie earlier today. I think what we're going to do is do two rounds before the local planning agency and then also first reading so that we're getting as many eyes looking at this as possible before you bring us something for consideration. But the goal is still to get it on and on the books before the current moratorium expires, which with its effective date being 30 days later, we're looking at a June-July expiration. So we're going to be pushing this pretty far, pretty fast.
Okay, Arlene, Matt?
So you have to have the regulation like in the next week or so?
Well, you'll have two opportunities to look at it and so will the LPA. So that's sort of our thought. We have draft regulations, but we wanted to get you the comments, see where the public conversation has been, what the highlight areas are for them, and then to make sure that those meld with what the council is looking for.
Fred?
Generally, what's the concept that we are proceeding with or at least leading with, not that it won't get modified?
Based on the direction that was received in July of last year, so Mr. Fegan had presented three different options. It was a do-nothing, somewhere in between, and then allowing like a total redevelopment. And city council at that time had given us direction to pursue the in-between. So a varying level of some form of redevelopment within parameters.
So we haven't decided on the degree of...
That's where we're getting the input on, obviously, what we think is an appropriate density, appropriate buffer setback. How do we preserve the open spaces? How do you want to see open spaces intertwined into existing communities? And a lot of the devil's going to be in the details, in my opinion, when we get through because some of the golf courses are located in existing planned developments that have certain requirements that those planned developments were approved on. So any conversion would have to also be consistent with that overall planned development, so.
Are we going to interweave in this so that if somebody converted a golf course that they would have to be more water conservation, wetlands, bigger retention ponds or something so that we would get an extra gain out of it as well?
Here's something we've been talking about and we were talking about earlier today. The issue is when it comes to golf course conversions and whether or not you're going to be using them for stormwater has a lot to do with whether or not they were used for stormwater purposes the first time around. Because then you're talking about impacting an existing stormwater system versus a situation where you have a golf course that is effectively vacant land, but hasn't been, isn't tied into a stormwater system. What we have been discussing internally is not necessarily stormwater regulations for golf course conversions, but in the concept of our stormwater conversation citywide, maybe moving some of those regulations into this conversion early and then will later be adopted citywide so that we're making sure that properties that are built up or where they're changing the elevation respective to existing homes adjacent, that there, there's protections for those existing homes.
I, most every golf course that I'm familiar with in Bonita, they're tied into some kind of stormwater system.
Yes. It is traditional that golf courses are double duty as stormwater and open space. But again, each of those things will be considered individually. And the question is, is the whole golf course being dealt with in one piecemeal effort? Or as in some of the other ones, they're being parceled out with different parcels dealing different? So we have to get down to the granular level at that point.
I think it would also be staff's recommendation that we look at these regulations for stormwater citywide. There are, there are, there are city, there's, we've brought up several times in looking at what the standards are, looking at adjacent communities, what their standards are. And so I think what we need to be looking at is enforcing everything citywide and not just to one particular development is that way we're addressing it in totality. And also keeping in mind with that modeling that we've discussed and each of these programs along the way, putting into the modeling so we look at the effect on the entire system which affects the city. Because what one development might do might down the line affect multiple developments.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
Have we decided whether we are going to require that if a golf course is being converted, that the entire golf course is taken into some kind of an analytic program? Or can people take off pieces of the golf course and develop it?
Well, we have existing golf courses that have been piecemealed already. So we don't generally put restraints on someone's ability to sell off portions of their land if they own the entire piece of land. So it might become very difficult, say, if there was a large golf course that got split up three ways. We can't make the first person who's looking to convert do an analysis on the other two parcels. That may be difficult as a practical matter. I think we're going to have to look at the proposals as they come in individually and how they're going to affect everyone.
Including the ones that are not being converted?
Including the ones that are not being converted because they'll probably be likely linked into an existing system.
And unfortunately, as we look through the standard citywide, we probably will be in a situation where we have non-conforming communities to the new standard. And we're going to have to look about how we address that as well.
I think the way that we've been thinking about it is that golf courses are effectively infill development. And it's not unique to golf courses that in many places in the city, especially older places in the city, you have older homes built to the regulations, the flood elevations of their day, with a new home being constructed at a higher flood elevation and having runoff effects onto that adjacent property. So the issues are sort of the same. The very granular level, a single-family lot being developed in an older part of the city and at a larger level at a golf course conversion. So we're trying to make sure that we're addressing those issues equally in either case. I think that, we don't have all the data on that, but that's the idea. We may be bringing some of those citywide programs into the golf course conversion so that we're covering that because we know we have a lot of people looking to develop those golf courses.
And the other area that I don't quite fully understand is like a lot of these communities were given their permits where they were required to put a certain amount of open space in their community. So I think somehow we need to address that when we're, when this golf course was typically considered open space is no longer open space and how you go forward with that. Because each community is different, right? Some requires a certain open space and others has less open space.
That's correct. So for example, if there's a golf course that's part of a planned development and that was part of the required open space, the virtue of them coming in to amend their golf course to seek redevelopment opportunities, they're going to have to demonstrate how they're consistent with our land development code for open space density. So like I said, the devil's really in the details because you can't just convert the property and look at it in a vacuum.
Another way of putting that is all the existing rules are still in place. This is not meant to supplant them, it's meant to supplement them.
Correct. Unless deviations are requested and we don't hold that process.
Right.
And it's correct.
Can't wait for the details. Good luck.
Any other questions I can help with?
Anybody? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay. Arlene and Matt, anything else?
The only other item I was going to mention is we're working to schedule with DPZ a public workshop on the evening of June 4th. And they will be here on the June 5th meeting for a presentation to council with an update on the form-based code. They might have some points of decision-making points. They'd like to ask you about a few things about the code as well. And then an update on the city-owned properties as well, the development standards for those. They will be looking at those as a separate river development district as it's unique into its own. And the requirements of that development would be different than, more restrictive than the entire corridor because that would be under the control of city council, the decisions you'd like to make, so. And then we'll be available, they will be here at city hall during the day on the 5th. And we're open to have individual meetings with anyone who needs a meeting to discuss their individual property as well as any council members who'd like to have a meeting with them as well.
What time will they be getting here on the 5th?
They're going to be here on the 4th for the workshop, so they should be here pretty much all day on the 5th.
When is the workshop? What time?
I think we're trying to schedule it for 5:30 or 6 o'clock. We're finalizing the time for that on the 4th.
On the 4th, so we should...
In the evening.
Hold on. Okay, workshop. Four or five, and then DPZ will be there, here for the next...
For the day, yep, for the day. And then they'll be here for the evening meeting.
Okay.
When you do these workshops, you post them so that council people can be there together and...
Yes, we do. And we also provide a disclaimer at the beginning of the meeting as well, that individual council members are here and they'll, you'll reserve your comments for the council meeting, but you're there to observe and...
Right, and I would just say, Arlene, you've been all great with this, working through this process. And of course, I've been bugging you when, hey, when are we going to get an update? What's going on? Because, you know, and I'll just wear my heart on my sleeve again here for a minute, everybody. I just think we're doing so many great things downtown. Mike Gibson goes to work now and sees things that he wouldn't, you know, less things or more things. More of the right things, less of the bad things than when he used to go to work at the bike shop years ago. And we've got some great momentum going on down there and I really look forward to these discussions. We have some beautiful, prime, pristine land on the river there. And it's, there's no reason we can't talk through this and make some decisions on behalf of our city and our downtown. So I'm looking forward to it for one. Anything else, Arlene or Matt?
Just as we have received an invitation from Francis Rooney to participate in a discussion about water and the mayor, and Matt will be attending that meeting. They've asked for one elected representative to attend.
Brush up on all those hard questions, Matt. There was a lot of questions there, items to cover. Okay, great. Anything else? Okay, great, okay. We're going to move on to mayor and council member reports. Fred, we're going to start with you. Mixing it up, throwing your curveball.
On the point that the mayor was talking about, I happen to have a discussion with a developer that's in the process of acquiring additional land on Old 41. And the prices per acre that people are getting is what I would consider astronomically high. Very good. I mean, they're making a good profit over what they paid on, so. Very good.
Okay, great. Mike? Okay, Peter?
We had an informational meeting here yesterday with Arlene, Matt, Derek and myself for about 15 to 20 members, a cross-section of people up at the Bonita Golf and Country Club area. So I thought that was very constructive and I want to thank staff for participating in that. Just an outreach thing, informational thing.
Laura?
Pat McCormick's celebration of life on the weekend was beautiful. His family's amazing, his son singing Danny Boy. And actually, it was the first time I actually heard a priest who actually could sing. So it was just so wonderful, wonderful. And he is and will be dearly missed.
Thank you. Amy?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I just had a couple of items that I wanted to mention. Next Tuesday, Arlene already mentioned with Congressman Rooney. At 2:15 at Bonita Bay, there is, and help me tennis fans, I believe it's what they call, Peter, what, a women's qualifier for the LPGA?
Well, it's not a, yeah.
Not LP, not LPGA, the Tennis Association, not the Golf.
Exactly, yeah, right. Well, it's a real event. It qualifies for the French Open among others.
For the French Open.
Yeah, I believe that's what it is.
And they're doing a tribute there at 2 o'clock for veterans and first responders. So I'd like to continue to get that word out for people that can participate. Laura touched on Councilman Pat McCourt's service, obviously tomorrow night at 5:00 PM. Is Councilmember Larry Keiker's service, and I have a tribute that I'll be bringing with me as well. And I think those are my items, okay? Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody, anything else? Okay, approval of the minutes?
Don't move.
And a second, okay, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Okay, great. Public comment? Members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.